Good evening, and welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting for September 10, 2018. Tonight's meeting is, the first agenda item is the signing of the warrant.
Motion to approve.
And I would second that and vote in approval as well. Next agenda item is the voting of the minutes from the August 20th and August 27th meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the August 20th regular session minutes?
And I would vote in favor of that as well.
And also make a motion to vote for the August 20th executive session.
And I would make a motion to accept those as well.
And I'll also make a motion to accept the regular session minutes of, I'm sorry, executive session minutes of August 27th.
And I would make a motion to accept those as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Okay, there are no public hearings tonight, so next scheduled appointment is Jen Ward from the Milford Youth Center. Could you give us an update?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. We were asked to provide a brief update and then to talk about our warrant article. So, Milford TV actually, who's a huge collaborator with us, found out we had this presentation tonight and had one of our after-school members, who's now an intern at Milford TV, create a short video. We always come here with numbers, so we figured if some visuals would really, you know, help out to really see what we do with the youth center. So, it's about four minutes long, so I'll play that first, I'll go over some updates, and then we'll go over the warrant.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Ann Lima, and today, we're at this event called March Madness. What do you like about March Madness?
I like the competition, the energy, everyone here is good, and I like the prize, the trophy, that's what it's for.
Do you think you're gonna win this year?
I don't know, we have a lot of good teams, and hopefully, my team makes it there and gets our name written on that trophy.
Okay, all right, you two are Girl Scouts camping, is that a good idea? Okay, great. Okay, you gonna burst the volcano?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Christine, I'm the program coordinator at the Milford Youth Center.
I'm Katie Cobell, I'm the assistant director here at the youth center.
And I'm Jen Moore, the director of the Milford Youth Center.
Today, we're gonna talk a little bit about our upcoming second annual telethon that will be held at Milford TV on Saturday, September 15th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m.
We will have a dunk tank, and we're gonna be dunking some pretty important people. We'll also have Dan Dewest come down and do his stunt bike riding, and then after that, we'll have some of his wrestling team do some arm wrestling. The big thing for this telethon, we're going to have the police department and the fire department have a basketball game here at the center. So, you can come down to the center and come watch the game. The halftime show will be Earl doing some halftime shots, and we'll also have McEwen's doing a halftime show. We will have a fire breather, we're going to have a Milfordy Jeopardy game, so there's more to come, so definitely tune in if you want to see what else we have. So, the reason why we're having this second annual telethon is last year, we had our first telethon, it was to help raise money for a room down in the basement that we're trying to make a multipurpose music studio room, and we were able to raise almost $7,000 last year, so we're trying to build upon that amount. We have received a quote for about $50,000 to complete this space, so this year, we hope to add on to that, so we can really start the actual work for the room and create those new programs for the youth center and the after-school program. So, you can visit milfordyouthcenter.net, and you can make a donation. We've also received some sponsorships already, we received a $2,500 sponsorship from the D.A. of Worcester, which we're very appreciative of. We would like to have other businesses reach out, right now, we had Simply Autodinous commit to sponsoring the halftime show, so every shot that Earl makes, they'll donate $100, and he's gonna shoot 10 shots. So, we're looking for other companies to reach out and hopefully be one of the sponsors, and you'll have your business name on the day of the show listed on Milford TV, and we'll make sure we post thank yous on our Facebook, website, and newsletter. Tim Rice is going to donate some of his artwork, we also have a driving certificate from TDA for some driving time. The kids from the youth center will also be making some inspirational art that we will have to auction off during the telethon. And don't forget to tune in, Saturday, September 15th, from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you, everyone, for your support from the Milford Youth Center.
So, again, those were Milford kids that made those videos, they edited them, and Milford TV is posting that event, so they were wise in making sure we promoted that as well tonight, so thank them for that video. To get into a little bit of the data of why we're here, like I said in one of our past meetings with the finance department, this is the first year that we've been able to actually compare numbers from being in the new facility, so we've had two full after-school programs, so it's really nice to really evaluate the data that we're seeing. So, some just key points that we'd like to point out, from the '16-'17 school year, we had 576 unduplicated youth who participated in that 10-month after-school program. This last school year, for the '17-'18 year, we had 627, so those numbers just prove that we're increasing each school year. We've been open for less than a week, and we have 104 already registered after-school members, so I imagine those numbers to even raise above the 627 number. In terms of programming, we have had over 46 different structured programs being offered during the after-school program. In addition, last year, we were able to add free dinner to every after-school member, so since we've opened, we've been able to offer one free snack, a whole grain item with a 100% juice item, and now do the collaboration with the Hockmuck Y, the state program, and the Milford Food Service Program, we're able to also provide a free dinner. In terms of volunteers, this is one of the highest increases we've seen, and it's also due to a lot of the programs and events that we're running. For the first, for FY '17, we had 110 unduplicated volunteers, FY '18, we had 353. So, we're really trying to get resources from the community to help, you know, watch the after-school program, but also participate in a lot of our monthly events. Just some numbers for people understanding how we really function, the town currently covers my salary and Katie's, the utility bills, and the facility's custodian, but other than that, we really rely on donations and fundraisers and grants and rental revenue. So, last year, we were able to bring in about $46,000 in donation money, and that comes from TDA, United Way, and the community, fundraisers about $14,000. And in the last two years, we've brought in over $50,000 of in-kind donations, floor machine to clean the gymnasium, furniture, food, event supplies, things like that, over $60,000 in grants. The room that we're actually trying to accomplish with the telethon is adjacent to a room that we got a grant for $54,000 to complete, so we're trying to finish our dance room that wasn't involved in the renovation in the basement, and then the room adjacent to it is actually that multipurpose music and media center. In addition to that, we've had over $100,000 worth of volunteer projects that have been accomplished at the youth center. The landscaping was about $30,000 outside in the front of the building, that was not part of the renovation, $20,000 worth of paint jobs downstairs in the basement from Benjamin Moore, additional walls being put up, batting cages in the basement, and an outdoor shed. Capital projects, which we're very appreciative of the town and town meeting members, we were just able to finish the gymnasium divider, which we had money allocated for, bleachers, and a video alarm and intercom system. Future upgrades, we are looking to have Wi-Fi in the basement, an art mural, some additional things for our heating system to cover the radiator, so it looks a little bit nicer when you walk in. And then with our new maintenance budget, we have already been able to add additional fire extinguishers, updating electrical in the basement, again, not involved in the renovation project, and chairs for our events and rentals. Katie really handles our rental program, over 40 groups have used the youth center for rental purposes, which we have been able, last year, we brought in $45,000 through rental purposes. So, that's really how we are able to sustain ourselves, we fund a full-time program coordinator with the money that we raise in the rental revenue, along with 16 summer camp counselors, and at least 10 after-school staff and rental staff for the weekends. So, that's the general breakdown of our program. Do you have any questions for that?
Turn it to you first.
Sure.
I have a lot to say, but I'm gonna turn it to you first.
No, I appreciate it, no, thank you, Jen. You and your staff do a great job, and that was a very cool video, that was pretty, that was nice to see. I know in the past, you and I have talked about, you know, not being part of the commission or anything like that, you know, I've always, even when I was on the FinCom, and we've had private conversations where, you know, the youth center is still kind of like a stepchild when it comes to being a town department, and I mean that sincerely, that, you know, we fought so we could cover salaries and things like that, because, you know, we have the senior center, we have the library, there's friends of the senior center, friends of the library, that really concentrate on the fundraising, so that the town departments can actually just concentrate on doing the activities and things of that nature. I mean, that's somewhere, like, we've talked, I would like to get there, and I know it's gonna take probably a couple more years, but I think we, you know, sooner or later, the commitment, and that's always been my thinking, as you know, that the youth commission isn't treated like every other town department. Now, if you folks or your commission come back and say, "We don't want it to be, we want it that way," then, you know, then so be it, I'm certainly not gonna oppose that, I mean, you guys are the ones doing the work, but I just, I always say that every time I see you, and I know I'm like a broken record, but I do think, overall, unless I'm talked out of it, the best way for, you know, the youth center to become a real town department is to figure out how long it's gonna take to get there, and figure out what we need to do to start transitioning a lot of those things, and just leave, you know, maybe the fundraising aspect to the commission, and actually have you treated like a full-town department. I know that's gonna be a commitment, and people have to buy into that, but, I mean, over the years, you guys have had tough years fundraising, great years fundraising, scrutinized, not scrutinized, you know, I just think that you guys have all come a really long way, and all I hear are good things that are taking place in that building, and that's to a credit to you and the staff and the commission itself, but I do hope that at some point, your department is replicating the senior center, the library, and it's on equal footing, because if we're gonna, if we're gonna say we support it, then I think it's just a matter of, it needs to be equal. So, that's my diatribe and my editorial, and I'll say it every year till it's done, but I'm hoping every year, we can get closer to you guys being and being treated like a true town department. I know when the commission was set up with special legislation, it was great back then, but I just don't know if now, because of all the work you're doing, if you should really be treated as a full-town department, but that's my editorial for this year, and hopefully we can get there, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask Amy to come up and sit up front. So, not to put you on the spot, I watched the presentation, and I saw you getting teary-eyed, and I was the same way. This is a building that we didn't need. We couldn't afford it, we bought it for a dollar, we spent a lot of money renovating it, and if you saw what goes on in that building every single day, you'd realize that that's what truly, truly matters, and we're all okay, we're all okay, but there are people in life that we need to take care of, and those are the children that go to the youth center every single day. And we have a responsibility to take care of them, to guide them, to give them the direction that they need, so that they will become, and they will, they will become leaders of our society, but we have a responsibility, Will, you and I as selectmen, have a responsibility to give them the opportunity that they need to become good citizens in our community, and that's what that youth center does over there. And some days, we just can't figure it out, we just look at it and say, "But you know what, with the help of all of you, you make the difference, and we can make the difference." And yet, is it costly? Yeah, it's a little bit costly, but you know what, in my opinion, and I was driving here tonight, I said to myself, "I'd rather spend the money to support the youth center than I would to support them in a jail cell," because they deserve an opportunity, and we need to make sure that we're all involved, that our children get involved, they go back and they want to coach, they want to counsel, and they want to help, and that's what this youth center is all about. You can criticize the town of Milford all you want, but one thing this town does, it gives back to its youth, and that's the most important thing that we have to offer. And Will and I both agree, and Bill, I'm sorry, Bill's not here tonight, I should've made reference, he was not feeling well, we all agree that you have to give back to your youth, because they are the ones that make the difference down the road, and so we're 100% with you, great job, great job, look forward to your telethon, and keep up the great work. And Amy, thank you.
Oh, please.
Thank you.
Sure.
You're all set?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to talk about the warrant? It's okay.
Yep.
He was gonna let you go.
I was like, I was ready to go, but...
Get up, yeah.
I know. So, the next reason why we are here is that we do have a warrant for this October town meeting.
Yep.
Which you guys are all aware of, it's been on the capital plan since we've been in the new facility. It's for AC and the headhouse, so not the gymnasium, the headhouse, which is the, all the offices, the upstairs, classrooms, and now, we've incorporated the two basement rooms that we have got through the grant and through the telethon. So, we are requesting the support for that article come in October, just a little bit more explanation of what type of system it is, because a lot of people are asking, like, if it would, you know, we've been newly renovated, well, we have to tear down walls. It was already planned from the get-go of this renovation, because it was not included in the scope, that it would be a future project, so it's a ductless system that will completely not interfere with the walls or anything like that, it's a unit that uses, it's called a VFR refrigerant flow, which goes through coils that then go through a mounted system on the wall. So, depending on the space in each of the rooms, that's how many of those systems that you would need in the rooms, and then that would actually supply AC and supplemental heat as well, if need be. So, it's the most efficient with an electric system that currently exists right now. Through research, we've found out that it's 350% more efficient than a central air system. It is less labor-indusive for a project, especially because it's ductless, and it will just provide that needed comfort, I mean, everyone was around for this summer, it was a very, very uncomfortable summer being in that youth center. We still made everything work, we had a seven-week summer camp program with over 100 families that participated, but I have to be honest, we had families that didn't send their kids on a lot of those hot days, due to either medical issues or due to discomfort, I mean, you step in the building and you feel it, it just keeps it in the building, but it's also not only for the comfort of staff, for the kids, for the community, Katie's seen, it affects some rental revenue for the summer, we've had...
We have a special needs group, a respite center in Hopkinton that likes to come in and use the facility, and on some of those hot days, one of the first ones, you would call and be like, "Oh, it's gonna be a bad one today, can we come in the center?" And I was like, "You know, that's great, we would love to have him," I said, "I just have to give you a heads up, we do not have AC, so if you guys bring plenty of water," they're like, "Oh, we can't have that for our clients." So, it is affecting, like, certain groups and everybody that is used to using our facility year-round, that they don't get the opportunity to.
And finally, another large point is that it will just protect the integrity of the building, I mean, we've had two studies, independent studies done in the last two years, to find out really what we need for a system, both for dehumidification and for AC, and they both clearly stated that we need an updated mechanical system that will help with replenishing air, especially due to humidity and high occupancy, so that a mechanical system for conditioned air is really a necessity for a building, like, for the programs that we run, and for, you know, to maintaining the floors and the walls and everything that we just put so much money and invested in. So, that's really the arguments behind the need for it, and again, like we said, it's been on the radar for the last three years.
My only question was, as long as it's been on the capital improvement plan, they shouldn't have a problem with any other...
Right.
Any other folks they have to go before, so...
Yeah, I would say move it forward. We'll take it to town meeting.
Yep.
Yep, absolutely.
It's a no-brainer.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
One other thing, their figure does include engineering, design work, so it's all-inclusive, so I think that should be made aware to the board.
Yep, we are, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is town administration's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few items tonight. First, we have talked about the hazard mitigation plan, I'm pleased to report that we've received the formal approval letter from FEMA. This plan approval now enables the town to be eligible to apply for FEMA hazard mitigation assistance programs. The plan, as you know now, will be effective for five years, we'll continue to update. Just another follow-up on the LED streetlights, we're almost there, we've installed approximately 1,400 of them, this represents about 80% of the total number of lights to be converted. We are now in the process of filing the paperwork for the town's energy initiative rebate application with National Grid. They have reviewed our initial application, as well as conducted a pre-installation survey of the project, and determined the town will qualify for estimated rebate payments from National Grid that should total approximately $120,650 if the install is completed as planned, which we know we will do. Update on the Central Street demolition, I had been asked to look into how we can take care of the area of the two buildings that have been demolished, both the town engineer and town planner are recommending we loom and seed the area at this time, as the area needs to be stabilized until the last building is taken down. Creating off-street parking at this time, they believe would only result in maybe two additional spaces, as we would lose at least three existing on-street parking spaces. We'd also have to do site design work and site plan review with planning board. They are working on an overall redesign once the third building is down, the estimate there is we could increase to at least maybe 52 additional parking spaces, and Will, last week, last meeting, excuse me, I think you asked me to look into the graffiti and the whatever on the buildings, I have looked into that, and we will get an estimate from a company, I've also looked with, as you said, with the...
Same last thing, I know the sheriff's office helped us years ago, when Memorial came under some graffiti attack.
We may be able to do it at a cost that I think we can absorb and get it done quickly.
The third building's not coming down for...
A year and a half, I guess, away now, somewhere in that neighborhood, correct.
Right, okay.
But we do want to, you know, we want to loom, seed, make it look nice, and they will block it off, so that parking, people won't go in there and park their cars. Two last items, one regarding the inspections department, as the board members know, we are understaffed at this time in the inspections department. Building Commissioner Markcott and I have met with a gentleman named Lawrence Hester, he's a retired certified local building inspector, he is available to work for the town for 10 hours per week, he worked for the city of Lawrence for almost 29 years, he has extensive experience in interpreting and administering the Mass Building Code, zoning bylaws, compliance use regulations, he's issued building permits, issued occupancy certificates. With this experience, we believe he could provide much-needed assistance to the department at this time, unless there's objection, he'll begin working for the town on Wednesday. If you remember, we also did this in the past with another gentleman named Joe Achoo, Joe was not available to help us out at this point, so it'll be on at least a 10-hour-per-week basis, and we'll see how that goes. We also do have some plans to hopefully look into hiring a local, and I think Will, it was you who mentioned some months ago, that maybe we should consider a part-time, and that's something I think you may be correct, and we may need to consider that, to get a good qualified local building inspector.
No, I appreciate that, because it's actually on my notes today, just to, you know, make sure that, you know, we mentioned the work that Matt and Eric are doing in that office while understaffed, and I know I've been copied on a few emails of some criticisms, but they're doing a lot, and we get their monthly reports, they're reacting to complaints, not only zoning, but, you know, he's literally a one-man show right now, who stepped up in our time of need to do this, and I think that's something that we have to continue to support them on, because they're doing a lot of work, and not always being complimented for it either, and they're doing a lot of work for being one person who can do these inspections, so if this retired gentleman is gonna be a help, and we can get another one, or a couple more, whatever it is...
I think it's worth pursuing, it's not the end-all at this point, but at this point, I think it will be a stopgap measure.
No, I think that's great, and as for the, I appreciate you still looking into the graffiti, because again, on Central Street, once those two buildings came down, you just see everything, and now I'm just, I'm driving by it every day, and it's, we just gotta make it as, yeah, best-looking as we can possibly, so, thank you.
And then the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, just for the public's notice, a little change on the selectmen's schedule, we will meet again next Monday, September 17th, there will not be a meeting on September 24th, and then the next meeting after that will be October 1st, so we will look for the postings on that, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, tonight.
Thank you very much, and to Will's point, you know, about the graffiti, I drove by the buildings the other day, and I saw them, and I said the same thing, but I also have to say that it's nice to see the two properties on 85 and 16 are all as best as they can be cleaned up.
Looking much better, I think.
Yeah, yeah, the one on the right-hand side is much, much better, but, you know, I give them a lot of credit, they listen to us, and they sent crews down there, and they took care of it, so, you know, send a message to the owners of those properties that, thank you, thank you very much, that, we appreciate it, absolutely. Next agenda item is old business, and it's to allow the release of the executive session minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, every so often, we do review the executive session minutes, determine which ones we feel can be released, when I say "we," Town Council, Boddy and I review them, we have come up with executive session minutes that we feel the purpose has been accomplished and can now be released to the public, those minutes are before you, and we would ask you to vote to release those minutes at this time.
No, I'll make a motion to release the executive session minutes that are documented on this memo dated September 10th, they go from November 21st, 2016, through May 7th of 2018, I'm sorry, June 4th of 2018, in all different versions.
And I would second that and make that unanimous.
Thank you.
And the next agenda under, I should say, next item of business, under old business is the approval of a warrant.
The town meeting warrant has been prepared, I want to thank, again, Town Council Boddy for his hard work, and also the department heads for submitting their articles in a very timely manner this year. There are, I believe, 36 articles to be placed on the warrant, all we'd be looking for you to do tonight is to approve the warrant, to vote on the approval of the warrant, I believe next week, we will start looking at specific articles to include in the board's review.
No, with that, I'll make a motion to approve this warrant for the special town meeting for October 15th, 2018.
And I would second that and make it unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next agenda item is new business, and under new business, we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you don't have a, this is the one you want to look at, you have one more, because it's amended.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yep. So, I have an announcement to make tonight from the Board of Selectmen. At our executive session on September 6th, 2018, the board voted unanimously to rescind its vote of July 30th, 2018, to remove Dennis Carroll from the Milford Personnel Board, meaning Mr. Carroll can immediately resume his term on the board. As Mr. Carroll's litigation case remains pending, the board will have no further comment tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I move into new business. First new business is Knights of Columbus permit to obstruct the toll road. Rick?
Yes, this is, I believe, an annual, they do their annual Tootsie Roll Drive. The proceeds collected benefit the physically and mentally handicapped in Massachusetts, and they're requesting permission to hand out the Tootsie Rolls and collect donations at the intersections of Routes sixteen and one oh nine, and, I can't find the date. And that's on Saturday, October sixth, and on Saturday, October thirteenth, from eight-thirty a.m. to two p.m.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I would second that and vote unanimously. Next is traffic supervisors' appointments and reappointments.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint or reappoint as traffic supervisors: Richard Bruggeoli, Francisco Schobbs, Loris Connolly, Paul Cormier, Paul Davidson, Peggy Farrell, Manuel Fonseca, Myron Gorbey, Don Acavelli, Barbara Jackson, Toussaint Jackson, Sue Kozlowski, Nadine Ledoux, Gloria Lanell, Larry Loether, Donna Mason, Frances O'Neil, and Christine Wispansky.
And I would vote in favor of that as well. Next agenda item is Milford Permanent Firefighters Association and Tri-Valley Runners Permit to Obstruct.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, again, another annual event. The firefighters look for, number one, a permit to obstruct for their annual Santa Parade on Sunday, December second, begins at four p.m. at Veterans Memorial Drive in the Big Y supermarket parking lot. The parade then proceeds up East Main Street to Main Street, end at Main and Congress Streets in front of the police station. In addition, they have an application for a permit to obstruct for their two-mile road race. That begins, as you know, ten minutes prior to the parade, and that begins at the Birch Street Fire Station. The Firefighters Association partners with Tri-Valley Front Runners, and the proceeds from the race will be to benefit the Firefighters General Fund and related local charities. So there'd be two motions, both for permits to obstruct.
So I'll make the motion to support the permit to obstruct.
And I would second that and vote in the affirmative as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the Milford Permanent Firefighters Welcome Santa Parade. Wow, that's kind of early.
Yep, same thing, it's what I just mentioned, and...
We're already talking about Santa.
It'd be a motion to do that also, yeah.
All right, second?
Yep, I'll make the motion to support the Santa Parade, of course.
And I would second that as well.
Would be able to go home.
Have it too well.
Exactly. The next is the Treasurer's Release of Tax Possession.
Yeah, all this is, is Town Treasurer Pillar just formalizing that he should be appointed formally as the town's tax possession custodian. He's been doing that, serving in that role, but pursuant to Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven B of Mass General Laws, this should be done on a formal basis, so we'd ask for a vote to appoint Treasurer Chris Pillar as the town's tax possession custodian.
I'll make a motion to appoint Christopher Pillar, the town treasurer, as the town's tax possession custodian.
And I would second that and vote in the affirmative. Okay, the next one, and I have to be honest with you, am I okay with this, to vote on this?
You're just going to be putting it on the warrant, you're not going to take any position. At the time, if the board decides to discuss the article, then perhaps duty or...
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I just have to be very careful with it.
All they're looking forward to do tonight, this is an article presented by Kevin Mean and Rudolph Parati, to rezone a certain area of property from single-family residential RB to neighborhood commercial CB. All they're asking is, one, to put it on the warrant, which you already did agree to do by approving the warrant, but, two, remand to the planning board. So the motion tonight would be to remand to the planning board for their review and hearing.
Well, definitely make the motion to support this position to be remanded to the planning board, and with that, also say that there are other properties abutting this that I hope would come forward eventually, too, because I think that that, and I hope that the planning board and the zoning board will take a look at that, because I think it covers two more things. It covers more of our downtown revitalization, it also helps with our commercial base, and I think it's just a good area that could support, you know, going from single-family residential down there to commercial, so I'm hoping this is something that other abutters are going to look at, because I think it could give us further a boost, especially when that whole area is surrounded by businesses...
Right.
On Route sixteen and one oh nine.
Yeah, and I would second that and vote unanimously as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next is the First Unitarian Universalist Church of Milford, a one-day liquor license.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support the one-day liquor license for wine and malt only, and the date is September twenty-sixth, from six-thirty to nine-thirty p.m.
And I would second that and vote unanimously as well.
Thank you.
And the next is the scouting organization, Food Drive Use of the Municipal Parking Lot.
I'll make a motion to support.
And I would second that and vote unanimously as well. And the last is Sierra Naturals' amend-the-host agreement.
Yes, as you know, we do have a community host agreement with Sierra Naturals. This amendment is to add a second location, and that second location would be at One Industrial Road, which is nearby to their current location, which is at Thirteen Commercial Way. The combined operation will not exceed the original contemplated operation under the host agreement, and obviously, they emphasize that retail sale of marijuana is not part of the operation.
Okay, so the only thing that's technically changing is that they didn't have enough room at the first?
That's in a nutshell...
So they're very expanding, but they're in the same neighborhood?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support.
And I have to be honest with you, I would second that as well. They've been a good neighbor, they run a good organization. I've been up, I've been around their building a couple of times, and as long as they keep operating the way they are, I would vote affirmative as well.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is correspondence, you have any correspondence?
I do not.
I do not as well. Rick, do you have any correspondence?
I do not have any additional correspondence.
There is no executive session tonight. Do you have anything else, Rick, or...
I do not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Will, do you have anything else?
No, it's a first.
And with that, I will say, good night to everybody, have a great weekend. I know it's only Monday night, but we'll be back Thursday night, so, thank you, thank you for watching. Have a great week.
You too.